Okay, we're good to go. The Board of Commissioners need to conduct a little bit of business first. It'll take like two minutes. So I'm going to call to order the Perry Tuck County Board of Commissioners on Tuesday, April 29th, 2025, to vote on two pieces of agenda items that need a second reading so that our law enforcement can issue citations on the outer bank. So the first one is Second Reading Ordinance Amendment, Section 1062 E of the Code of Ordinances to add a criminal penalty for a violation. And number two is Second Reading Ordinance Amendment, Section 1262 of the Code of Ordinances to add a criminal penalty provision. So we can take both of those in the form of one motion. We have a motion from Tony Angel. We have a second from Mike Payment. Any further discussion?
Hearing none.
Hearing none, all in favor of aye. Motion carries. We have convened our board now. Chairman, you can convene your...
All right, we're going to call this meeting to order. The Perry Tuck County Board of Education. We're excited to be here today. We thank Mr. Avio for his willingness to get commissioners together here with us. We think this is going to be important for the community. It's a way for us to show the community that we're committed to working together for what's best for Perry Tuck County.
Absolutely. And I just want to add to that that the school board chairman and vice chairman, myself and Ms. Jarvis and our staffs met, I guess it's been three months ago, to discuss issues and went away from there, still talking to each other. And we decided that sometime in the future, we needed to pull the full boards together for a discussion and talk about some of the issues and things that the schools face as well as the county face as it comes to education. So I know that we have four presentations tonight. What I would ask is that we allow the presentation to finish before we ask questions so that we don't go chasing squirrels and go down a rabbit hole. And then after each presentation, we can ask questions. And hopefully, we can finish within about an hour to an hour and a half. And everybody can go home and eat a bowl of cereal like I'll have when I get home.
Smart wife.
Yeah. So with that, I guess Dr. Loops, you all have presentations.
Are they going to start with funding? Is that correct, Dr. Loops?
Yeah.
All right, perfect.
Good evening, boards. I'm Susan Mazel, Finance Officer, Perry Tuck County Schools. Again, thank you for letting us come here to talk to you a little bit about school funding, how it works, how we do our budgeting. Because I think it's, I think a lot of people think that school funding is very similar to other people's funding. And our school funding tends to be very different from other people's funding. So we're going to talk about that a little bit today. We're going to talk about state funding, local funding, fund balance, and our preliminary budget. So in North Carolina, we've got three major funding sources. Federal, it is our most restrictive, which I'm sure you're familiar with. I'm sure you have dealt with federal funds, lots of string, there's a lot of food jumping that don't go along with it and is very specific on what you can use it for. So for us, it would be things like Title I, children with disabilities, school nutrition. It's also one of the smallest funds that we have. And that's due to us being in tiers or counties. So the next we have is state. It's still restrictive. It's not as restrictive as federal. It's specific on what they allow us to use it for. And it is our largest source of funding and covers basic programs. And then we have our local source, which is you. It is the least restrictive funding and it covers critical gaps that we have that state and federal don't cover. So from the state, we receive two different types of allotments. We receive dollar allotments and positional allotments. Dollar allotment is exactly what they sound like. They give you a certain amount of money for a specific thing and you have to live within that dollar allotment. So examples would be teacher assistance, transportation, supplies, and materials. But then we have this other allotment that is unique to North Carolina and it's positional allotments. So for positional allotments, it's used for certified staff only. Certain certified staff only. We can't put every certified staff member in there. But examples of this is classroom teachers and school personnel. So what makes the positional allotment different is they'll say, and I'll use teachers as an example. They give us 207 teachers at a cost of approximately 16.2 million. But if we spend 17 million on those 207 teachers, they honor that. They don't hold us to the dollar amount. They hold us to the number of positions that we have. So that piece is where we start our budget out. It is the most critical part of our budget because if you do this piece wrong, you can cost yourself extra money. So we're going to look at an example of who goes in the positional allotment. Teacher A makes 55,000, teacher B makes 60,000. I'm not going to ask for an answer because it's a trick question. One would initially think it would be the high paid teacher, right? It's the teacher in total. So you have to look at not only the salary, but then the costs that go along with it. So even though teacher B makes 60,000, teacher A costs more because teacher B didn't take health insurance. So that's part of what we go through when we're doing the budgeting process. We're going through each individual, looking to see how much they cost a district. And we take the highest people and those are people that go in positional allotments. So if you do this wrong, if I take teacher A and I put them, I just cost local 1,500 extra dollars that I didn't need to. Some of the state funding challenges that we have, and this one sounds, if you first say it out loud, reliance on local funding. So the state expects that you will supplement what they give us. They also expect, because you are a tier-three county, that you're going to fund this higher than a lower wealth county. And add support for high-needs students, for under, for children with disabilities, for English learning services, and mental health support. So just as an example, talking about children with disabilities, it's funded based off of the head county. No special needs child is the same. Some of them have less needs, some of them are very high needs. But we're giving the exact same amount of money for the high-needs kid as for the low-needs kid. State's working on that right now. They're trying to come up with a better funding formula that addresses that a little bit, but they're not there yet. Hopeful. Charter schools and voucher expansions. Public schools are being, public school funds are being diverted to these entities. So now charter schools and vouchers are part of the public school. We're all one big pot and now it's being divvied out to all these different entities. Unfunded mandates. This tends to revolve around pay. So a couple of years ago, they came out with a $15 floor for employees. Couldn't pay your employees anything less than $15 an hour. Now, they gave us funding for those people that were in state. They didn't give us any additional funding for the people that were in local and give us any additional funding for the people that were in federal. So we had to absorb that. This year, they're talking about possibly raising beginner teacher pay $10,200. That's a big jump. That's great for teachers because they really need it, but that is a big increase. It's a big increase. And again, this is going to be, we're going to give you the extra funding in state, but there's nothing coming from local. So for us, that would be approximately $200,000 we would have to absorb into our budget. And then the unpredictability of state budgeting. You never know what funding will change until after the state budget is approved because we go through the different cycles with the legislatures of this is going to be recurring this year, that's going to be non-recurring next year. Some of it, they just do away with, they add new things in. But we never know what we're going to get until the state actually finishes the budget. And then the question being, when does the state actually approve the budget? It could be anytime between July and November. That's a long time to wait. So when we talk about local funding, I'm just giving you some, actually, these are the main examples of what local funding is supporting. All things fund balance. I know it's something we go back and forth with about fund balance. So you have a fund balance. I'm sure you know, fund balance, that's your emergency cash. You keep it on hand for unanticipated expenditures, cash for one-time expenditures. Fund balance should never be used for recurring expenditures. How much should we hold in fund balance? That's a matter of opinion. There's nothing in state law that says how much we have to have on hand. I think, you said we could be honest in the room, but we could disagree. So as a C of though, to me, and I have it there, fund balance should always be a priority. So that's something that we should always be trying to build up. We shouldn't be building it up unnecessarily, but we should be trying to have a decent fund balance. Now, here's my example for you. And I want you to think about it because you might have actually been here when it happened. I can't remember because it was over a decade ago. We came back, we came back from Easter break to be told by the state that our state funds were frozen and we couldn't use them for the rest of the school year. So that's two months that we would need something to cover those funds. The bulk of our people sit in state. And at the time, if recollection serves correctly, because that is a long way back, we had enough fund balance to cover it. We didn't have to come over here. So that's the kind of thing I want you to think about when we're talking about fund balance. Is it something that would happen all the time? Probably not. Can it happen? Yes, because it has. But that's just something, please, think about that. Here's our fund balance history. I went back as far as 2011 and showed it from the board. See it one time. It was pretty substantial. And then it began dropping a little bit and built it back up. And we had, actually, we had several things that happened all kind of at once. COVID happened, so we had some savings from that, but the school was shut down. Received approximately 9 million in ester funds. And we had ADM increases all going on kind of at the same time. So funding timelines misaligned, and I hope this isn't $53 read. I almost feel like I have a funny. So for us, we're required by law to have a budget due by May 15th, which is on the bottom there. You see 15 with a circle. The state doesn't start doing their budget work until March. They're not going to approve anything any earlier than July 1st. And they can go all the way out as far as November, in prior experience, before they approve a budget. Federal planning starts in May and can run through August. So anywhere in there, we can start getting planning allotments from federal. So those two things are happening. You're approving your budget by June 30th. But we have to have our stuff over here by May 15th before we know those critical. So what we've done is presented a preliminary budget. And that's due to Mr. Loops funding timelines that will keep schools running and avoids disruption, maintains continuity of student. So what's in the budget, and this is a summary of the budget resume that we sent over here. The amounts received for state, federal, school nutrition, and other local funds are as they stood up March 31st. So that is current expenditures, the ones that are not highlighted. The two that I've changed are local current expense fund and capital outlay. I have updated those for the budget requests that we have at the county. This gives us a preliminary budget of approximately $84.7 million, keeping in mind that approximately $20 million of that capital outlay is tolls free. And I don't know if the Board of Commissioners knows that, but... So when you did the addition scores, when you do tolls free, we are required to put that on our books as well. It's obviously not a cash entry because the money is running through you, but we are required to put that on our books as well. Okay, so how we use our funds, but this is a current look of where we are. This isn't just state, this is local, this is all funds together combined and how we spend it. So 52% is instructional services, 44% is support, systemized support services, 3% ancillary services, and 1% non-program charges. The local accounting, the 10 teacher assistants from this year that was in the formula, utility costs for tolls free ones is turned over to us. Additional $3,000 supplement per teacher, all to be added to the full people amount in the funding plan. This would yield a local appropriation of approximately 16.7 million. For capital outlay, we're requesting recurring 135,000 per year for technology upgrades, a one-time cost of 350,000 for bus radios. When you add that to the 1.4 million that we've been getting each year, that gives us an approximate request of 1.9 for capital outlay. So these are some of the things that we're watching because we do have some areas of concern for the budget. School nutrition and transportation being two of them, they've really kind of been an ongoing thing as long as I've been in the school system. That's been 17 years now. School nutrition is a program that's not sustainable on its own. And that's due to the fact that the reimbursement rate from the state doesn't keep up with the cost of doing business. It has been my experience that the counties that are low wealth are the counties that are doing okay with school nutrition. They tend to stay in the black and sometimes they have spending down plans that they have to do. The wealthier counties don't have that. They tend to be in the red, which kind of suggests to me that maybe the formula isn't correct or it goes back to the state is expecting us to pick up more. Transportation is one of those, it's one of those things because the geography of the county is interesting. It makes it a little challenging. Trying to get a high efficiency rating is difficult. It's difficult to get it and it's difficult to keep it. And unfortunately, efficiency equals funding when it comes to transportation. Of course, we talked about the possible state mandates already with beginning teacher pay, increased costs across all areas, impact of tier-three designation, which tends to give us a lack of grant opportunities. Although I will say this because I meant to mention it earlier. We were very lucky this year. We applied for a grant for SROs, which typically they tell us that we're too wealthy to get that. But this year, they gave us 149,000 that we were able to send over here in March for you to put towards the elementary SROs. So we try, we try our best to save money and to be good stewards of the money and to help you out when we can. But the state doesn't always make it easy for us. And of course, we have continued growth in the student population that's challenging. So the timeline that we're looking at, our preliminary budget was approved by the Board of Minutes on 4/16. We sent the budget over to the county on 4/25. In June, you finalize your budget. And sometime between July and November, final budget, final budget will be adopted after approval of county and state budgets. So what we're talking about here is you've got a preliminary budget. We changed local and capital outlay. We're still waiting on the other pieces. So when we have those other pieces, we're going to come back and do a final budget and then we'll send a copy over here to you. To me, this is a much more accurate picture of what we have going on than me trying to sit over there, basically trying to guess what the legislatures are going to do and then send that over here to you. It's not really a great picture. And of course, just reiterating what we talked about, our main is that preliminary budget helps us continue on with the basic operation, make sure that our staff and our students are taken care of. And for me, I think this is the more responsible and transparent budgeting system is to at least say, this is where we are as of this moment. These are requests we have with the counties. And then once we have all the pieces together, here's the final budget and what it looks like. Thank you. I know we have new board members on both sides, so I appreciate the fact that you gave me the chance to come and talk. And I know I get nervous, so I start talking faster than words. So I apologize if I went too fast, but I do appreciate the opportunity to at least come and talk because that really was kind of a summary version. Finance can really be complex and get down into the weeds. I tried to stay out of there as much as I could, but... So questions?
Yeah. I understand that because we're a tier-three county, the state penalizes our school system? Or did I just infer that myself?
That's how it feels. That's how it feels.
We get penalized for everything.
Branding eligible bottom five in the state with federal funding every time. Sometimes we're the second worst and that affects the federal funding as well as being a tier-three.
Yes.
Yes. Well, we're trying to get some movement on that in Raleigh. We're working very hard and Senator Hannig and Representative Goodwin are trying to move that along. And actually, they've been trying for quite some time. So I'm hoping we get some traction on that because that will fit everybody if we can get to here.
But there's a tier, a tier two.
Yeah.
So with Camden, I mean.
Yeah.
That is why Camden's getting money for a new school and Chelan is and Perford County is.
Something we didn't try.
And we got nothing.
Yeah.
Now, we were in one budget to give money, but that was the year that the General Assembly did not pass a budget. And the next year, when they passed one, we didn't pass the budget.
And I think the concern might be as well, if the Department of Education is disbanded at federal level, that money goes to the state. Are they going to use those funds and still rate us as tier-three and we get less than what we're getting from federal now?
So Ms. Mazel, we get about $4 million from federal now?
Yes.
Is that still about 12% of their budget? I think it used to be about 12. What percentage of the budget comes from federal?
The $3,000 supplement per teacher, how many teachers? Is that 500, 600?
I'll put that number with me.
Ask the small part.
It's close to 300.
So that number that we talked about for positional allotments, what is the, what is the gap between what the state allot's versus what we actually have?
I'm sorry, I didn't get to the first question.
You said earlier, we have two types of state funding. We have the allotment funding and the dollar allotment, or the positional allotment.
Yes.
How many positional allotments would the state give us?
So it's based off of ADMs. They calculate it, the number of teachers that you get and it breaks down by grade level. So currently, we have 207 teachers.
But we actually have 300?
And Matt, in mind, there's all kinds of, so we have classroom teachers, we have EC teachers, we have AIG teachers, we have enhancement teachers. So that's your enhancement, is your PE, your art, your music. There's a whole separate positional allotment for those in the district. Then they're spread all over in different places.
And Matt could probably speak better to this. Part of what happens, because of our geography, we have so many schools and we have a lot of small schools. But when we have that, when we're getting those allotments of teachers, they're not taking into account buildings. They take into account total numbers of students. So for example, how many PE are...
So we get 12 total in the elementary division to cover music, art, PE. But we use six right out of the gate, the PE. All of our, every building has that. And when you add tolls free, that's seven. And because it's based on ADM, on the number, because of the smaller schools, they're inefficient. But they're also do, that's just, that's the reality of it.
But we don't even get enough from the state to cover PE and music at every school. Or that's why for years, we did a half and half, like you were halftime music at Sharbor or halftime music at Moyac. But when you have 650 kids, we were asking our music teacher to teach 1,300 students, which is not even possible. So that's a great question because that's what I think is hard for the public to understand. You're getting this allotment based on this concept that we have 600 kids in buildings and we don't because of the geography of our county. And because we're not going to just do away with the buildings we have and request new schools. But it's partly why we made a commitment to make tolls free bigger because it's more efficient if it's bigger. It's not necessarily better for kids, but financially, it's far more efficient to have 700 kids in a school.
That's where the county has the strain with our local dollars. Because every time we build a new school, we have to operate it beyond what the state does. And so when you build, I know everybody likes small 300-student schools, but when you've got a whole bunch of 300-student schools, it costs just as much to operate as a 700 students, basically.
Well, and it's actually much different per pupil.
Yeah.
I mean, it's much, it's much different per pupil. Central Elementary and Knott's Island Elementary are our most expensive schools to run.
How many students do you have in Knott's Island?
90, 95, yeah.
Went up.
It's gone up, which is great. And you know, we certainly don't bust those around because then you're going to deal with this transportation cost is now Moyac overcrowded. But in terms of money we spend on children, there is no school in the county that we spend more per pupil than Knott's Island Elementary.
How many schools, which are expanded, are, and they were, Jarvisburg was a bit expandable. I think Sharbor was.
Sharbor can't because of the septic.
Correct, but it was built to be expandable. And the high school was, the two wings were expandable on those.
I think the issue becomes the septic. And so like Sharbor can't be expanded because of the septic. There's questions whether the high school could be expanded because of the septic. Jarvisburg, I think, could be.
Could be.
But that's where we go. I mean, even when we added the portables to Moyac Elementary, people were surprised about how much money we had to spend on the septic to be able to put those portables in. And it's that, again, we talk about challenges of the county, not having that infrastructure, not having county sewer. How, how much was the septic, Matt?
1,000. We had to put for six, six units in the back. We had to build a separate, Matt can speak for that, a separate septic system just for those six trailers.
Over 100,000.
Right, but as far as the high school goes, I mean, it's like you said, it's less costly to expand when we can. So if you can expand a high school and spend a few hundred thousand on some septic upgrades, that's cheaper than building a 100 million dollar...
Absolutely. And right now, we're not anywhere near that. That's, that's kind of a community narrative that the high school's overcrowded. The high school, the high school is not overcrowded. There's room in the high school. I taught in the high school. The idea that teachers get their own classroom is a wonderful concept. I taught in high school for nine years. I never had my own classroom. I went from room to room and that's how you maximize a building class.
Well, you know, the Moyac Elementary, once the wastewater system gets up and running, I would hope the county would be in a place where we could, at some point, expand wastewater to Moyac. And then that would take the maintenance and the trouble with the Moyac off of, off of the system. And then if the middle school in Moyac, if ever the Eagle Creek system gets fixed, maybe it could, at some point, go onto a system as well. So anytime we can put a school on a system, it's efficient and it saves money. It's some upfront costs, but you've got to spend a little bit of upfront to save in the long run. So those are definitely conversations that I think our next agenda item is kind of, kind of talk about some of these things.
I think we're doing capital projects. Any more questions?
Anybody have any more questions?
I wanted to follow. So we have 207 of those positional allotments. And you guys said that it breaks down differently for teacher, for PE. So we have 12. Is that in the 207 or is that additional?
That's additional.
Okay, so that's plus two over, plus 12. Are there any other elements to that that we're missing? Like as far as, if I were to calculate the total number of positional allotments versus actual teachers we have? Regular teachers and PE, art, music? Is that...
Sorry, real quick on the 12 for K5. That was deliberately because of the K3 class size mandate, that it created more classes and it ate up any positions that you had. So the state said, we're going to give you positions specifically. So the state, to Susan's point, the state tells us exactly how we're going to spend our money. And so they said, these 12 are attached to these specific positions. Those positions, I don't think were there five years ago. They were not there. So the state will come in and drop positions. It's like they did for nurses. They're going to give us plenty specifically for, for that allocation. We have no flexibility around...
We have no flexibility around that. In terms of the total numbers, special education teachers, they come in on an allotment as well and so on. So the 207 speaks to general education.
General classroom teachers.
General K12 classroom teachers.
Yes.
How many new students did we get now compared to last, end of last year? How much have we increased?
I don't have that, I carry that with me all the time. I had it at every board meeting except this one.
All right, we can send it over.
Our last two kindergarten classes though have been smaller than in, there was no projection for the last two kindergarten. All of our other projections are on. Our middle school is at about 1,270 right now.
And, and you mentioned beginning teacher pay going up by possibly $10,200. What in the world's that going to do to everybody else? I mean.
Well, that's because they're, they haven't addressed anybody else. So the concern finance saw immediately, we went through this with that whole $15 an hour thing. If you don't raise everybody else up, now you've got all these teachers that are compressed together. How is that fair to them? And if you do stretch it out, there is a rule because that one.
Well, in $10,200, would you put beginning teachers just about where teachers are at 25 or 30 years?
Yeah, it's bad, it's bad.
I don't think that's something that you're going to see this year. I really don't. Uh, one side will introduce a big teacher pay this year.
Oh, yeah.
And then the other side will vote it down. The next year, the other side will introduce it and then this side will vote it down and they just come out with a percentage every year.
And they just said we try.
I think one last thing though, we're talking about schools though. A lot of times we forget there's a back door in the schools too. We look at, you know, um, people see growth and they say, oh my gosh. Well, growth is filling the schools up, but kids move out every year or two. So you know, kids graduate from high school, like move from the first grade to the second grade. They move from the sixth grade to the middle school or, or fifth grade to the middle school. And a lot of times we don't take into account, there's a back door at the schools too. Sometimes it's, it's not quite as urgent as we think it is sometimes. I mean, we had 100 more students this year or whatever, but we also some left the school as well, so.
I think Dr. Luke said 42 where the, when they don't do the, like, you know, that first week of Monday, Tuesday when school kicks off, you might not have any kids and then population, what did you, did you say it was like the second week or something where they pick the population?
The first two months of the year, they picked the highest number in the first two months.
The first, okay. What's your two weeks or two months?
So this year we were off, they give us within 100, is that right? And this year we were, we were off by 11 and what did we have to send back?
We didn't have to send anything back, this year we actually got.
Was it last, the year before that was quarter million dollars?
Yeah, they, they changed the formula this year so that we don't have to revert money in the same year. They'll take it back in the following year, so it gives you several months to plan for that, which is nice.
We give like a tax break, take you like a tax break, all the homeschool kids come one day and then the access numbers higher and then.
That was a valid question, I even said.
Well, we send a check to the charter.
Yeah.
You know that we sent, which I'm thankful for the charter and for Raleigh. I'm thankful for that school and the need that it needs. But we have to send a check to them every year out of our money to operate that school. What if, do we know what we sent?
I know that this year we're on pace for about 320,000. We've got 95 kids, we picked up an extra charter school. And that's out of what? Charter school kids in your formula.
I was, somebody said that there's, there's the charter school fraud, there's students all over their county that go to that school, not just current like county residents.
That's possible.
Okay, but that doesn't matter though, I mean.
We're not paying for the areas.
We still gotta take.
We're not paying.
We don't, okay, so we just take care of the ones that.
Yeah, they just finished the building.
Yeah.
Dare County sent a check, we've been, I'm understanding that they.
Okay, yeah, that was. But I think again, that school actually helps us, so I want to be clear, we're thankful. But again, it's $325,000 out of our budget. It's still cheaper than us running the school over there. So we're thankful, but I think it's another expense that people don't think about. Our money goes there to educate those kids.
Ms. Madzo, when you say 325,000, is that from local, from federal, just local?
So let me get this straight now. The state said the money could follow the student, but they're not following the money, it's our money?
So the state takes back charter school kids out of our state funding and they send them back to the charters. But the local funding that we get from you, we have to send it to the charters.
We have to do, we have to do that.
Yes, that is general statute.
So we're already sending money to the local, to the charter school.
During the 20 dollars?
Great bait and switch up state level.
Terrific.
Yes, it's a bait and switch.
So we have six charter schools that we fund. It's not just local ones, so I mean, the two local would be neat and water's edge. But there's also virtual charter schools that we have to pay. We've got seven kids that are attending charter school in Hollow Springs. And unfortunately, they changed the, the formula on that used to the virtuals. They got a lesser amount than the brick and mortar, but now we have to pay the exact same amount to the virtual schools up against the brick and mortar schools, which doesn't look to seem fair, but surely the overhead is not the same, but yeah.
We've got a Nord Ash and like Wendy's up there.
I think Commissioner Etheridge had a question, then we can move on if y'all like.
You mentioned that because Currytown's considered high wealth, we expected to pay a paper supplement. I did some research today in Wake County, which is the second best financially stable county in the state. Their supplement is $733 a year.
So it's not, not specific to supplement, they expect that you're going to supplement the school system as a whole.
You're talking about the general fund that we give you, not the specific teacher supplement?
Yes.
That's supposed to teachers.
Yeah, that's, oh, and I don't want to, but that's not, I mean, like I have the list of 23, 24 supplements. Wake is ranked two, we're like 73rd in the state.
At what, 113?
The Wake supplement is, Wake supplement is $9,828.
They published $733.
Yeah, they, I'm not sure I'm saying, I'm not trying to be ugly or anything. I actually just brought that because someone had asked me about that. But no, Wake is actually, which is part of my, and then I knew we got to move on. Ms. Ayers and I were able to go meet with Mo Green when there was a event at Northeastern. And part of what we talked about is that the Northeast is in a particularly complicated situation because of what? Because of bordering with Virginia. So when we talked to Superintendent Green, we said, could you make the Northeast some kind of economic region? Because just like that, if you're a teacher in Raleigh, if you're a teacher in that area, you're not going to travel three hours to go somewhere else to teach, plus they're big metropolitan areas, so their tax base is different and they can fund a $9,800 supplement. Whereas Elizabeth City, us, Camden, Dare, you know, Bertie, all of us are in the same situation because someone can drive an hour and make 30 more thousand dollars. Now, certainly it's more challenging, there are different problems. Whenever we recruit teachers and we bring them into our schools, they're amazed by our facilities, they're amazed by our students. But at the end of the day, if somebody needs to pay their bills, 30 grand is the difference. But like Paul said, they're throwing out 10%, nobody's going to give anybody 10%. That's a political game, but we're, off the data we have, we're 73rd. And, and I'm not saying that to be critical, I'm saying it to be factual. That's where we have landed before asking for this additional $3,000 for 73rd out of the 100.
Is there supplement right now?
It depends on the teacher.
So we don't have across the board $2,000 per teacher supplement?
It, it's banded every five years they get.
And it's on our website, you can see it. Most teachers are making 35, maybe 4,000 more. We tried to give some longevity that, you know, if you stayed here a little longer because people feel like, gosh, I've been here and that, and you know, do I get some kind of credit for staying? So it's a little more, but you know, the max out, it isn't to five yet. I mean, that's when Dare did their thing last year, is as soon as we had some issues, they went up there. We used to be right with them and now theirs is higher than ours, but we're just trying to be competitive.
To Mr. Etheridge's point, I think he was right, your number's correct, but that's per month. Wake County salary schedule posts that it gives a supplement of $733 per month for the base supplement for a teacher.
That's not my question.
Yeah, that's the same.
Okay, uh, are we ready to move to the next agenda item? Schools capital projects update. I, I asked for this to be put on here because myself, uh, Commissioner Angel and Commissioner, uh, well, I guess Ms. Rose may have been a part of the school board, but we were not aware of the additional capital funding that the county's doing. And we have some new school board members as well, so it'd be a good exercise to kind of go through this and let us see what we're doing and power move.
Good evening. We'll get it back. Good, I'm sorry. We'll figure it out, y'all want to get it back up here?
We thought she stopped the recording.
Johnny, I have a request, so please keep your role.
Good evening, boards and other distinguished guests of the meeting, and I thank you for inviting us. Um, what you see in part of you today is what I like to call our sound care to kind. We can do special capital funding projects. This all evolved out of a request a few years back for us to do a long range facility study, which came in very huge and we narrowed it down to priority repairs. And what I have here is the first two years of these projects, a list before on a spreadsheet and the future projects that I would like to do in the next budget year and then some of the lottery funds and public school building repair and renovation fund projects that I've worked on, on the side along with these special capital funding projects. You, you'll see as I go through here, the, the theme tends to be building envelope and student comfort, air, heating and air. Uh, we've had some aging equipment because of aging roofs. So uh, that's what you're going to see for the most part when we're going through here and some structural settling and foundation repair, cross raised space repair on schools that are older than a crawl space. I'll just uh, the check marks, basically this is an extension of my document that I use to carry all this information and keep up with it. So I've modified it for simplicity and the check marks tell me that this project is complete and the contractors that I can utilize to do these projects. So I'm just going to scroll through slowly and show you some things. And if you see anything that you want to ask questions about, take note of that, we'll go through each tab. Been focusing again a lot on roofing, building envelope, windows that leaked when I first got here, roofs that leaked when I got here, brick walls that the moisture was coming through the brick, masonry point up, IFIS repaired the high school, Laster Merrick coating to make sure that moisture doesn't get in for the next 10 to 20 years. We've replaced, in the last two years, we've replaced six chillers at different schools, two of those being at the high school. Jarvisburg, Sharbor, Kurt's Up Middle, hand rigs have been replaced. So for the most part, the older chillers are gone. We did an R renewal, which is the train product of the train chiller at Moyac Middle, Middle School to save a little bit of money, get a little bit more warranty, get a little bit more lifespan out of a 20-year-old chiller. Give him a five year more, five years more on the same chiller or more, usually at about 10. The chillers at the high school had been R renewed before I got here and they've lasted 10 to 12 years. So I'll get into the second year, which is the one we're completing now. And you'll see a few more things on here. I have a lot of projects that are contracted, which you'll see in green, and a lot of projects that are contracted and completed. But lead times on mechanical equipment are still pretty bad, so it's taking me a while. I'll send a piece of paper, the process for these projects, just so you know. I put a funding document together, send it to our board, our board votes on it. After our board votes on it, comes to you. And then I left a contract and then the parts get ordered. So it's a two or three month process before I can get things ordered. So I like for example, one of my chillers was on a 60-week lead time. So it took almost a little over a year to get it in. So. Well, these, go ahead.
I was gonna say, there's prices you have up there, those are contracts that already been.
The ones that are green are contracts that already, have already been let.
Okay.
And things that have come across your table, you voted on them already. And the check marks to the right are the ones that have been let and completed.
Because I used to have a grid, one of the halls had grids, it was like 15 degrees warmer from me to you.
Yeah, and that, that school is still a challenge because it's separated between A building and B building. And there's a pump that runs everything from the, the back to the front. And we always know if the front of the school is warmer or cooler, then we've had a pump that has stopped, so we have to send somebody up to work on that. All right, the third tab are projects that I have received quotes for and I'm waiting to send them through for your approval because of the next budget year. So these are things that are going to be coming your way starting in July. And this is just a partial list, I haven't done everything for the next company upcoming year.
How long did you get those prices?
Which one are you talking about?
I'm just looking at split systems because they just wish that new refrigerant with propane base in it now. And I'm going to tell you the challenge with that, split systems is.
That rooftop unit, a split system for Jarvisburg came in about two months ago. And I will tell you that the contractors are telling me that just like with COVID, things are up, tariffs. I'm getting told now that if I don't get these contracts in quickly, the tariffs are going to increase things.
Well, they had the problem, just, I don't know if you're aware of it, HVAC system, now is the new refrigerant, they have played the freon, but they have no containers to put them in.
Yeah.
So if you put a new system, you can't, there's no freon to put in, it's just a charge and we're in limbo now because.
Well, that's the 454. Yeah, yeah.
You can't get the freon, so why are you going to put a system if you can't fill it up and run it for somebody?
Yeah, I had someone tell me they ran into that problem.
Yeah, nobody's got it.
You put it in a system, it was perfectly fine. The next day you got called by the, the customer, somehow there was a leak in the system from the factory, which I will tell you, I've run into on all of my chillers that I've installed, all but one, I've had a leak internal to one chiller, I had valve fail on another chiller and I had four compressors that were loose on the last one I installed in Sharbor from the factory, manufacturing process.
Yeah, I just want to make sure you had the prices locked in, that those old refrigerant, new refrigerant. So I just.
Yeah, well, I mean, we, we had the high school chillers. Those chillers had 900 pounds of R22 in them, so you know how much that was going to cost. That's why I replaced them.
Yeah.
I mean, they were running fine, but I didn't want to lose my money on that.
I didn't want to get sidetracked.
The last time I checked on if I had a leak on one of those chillers, it was $45,000, probably more than that. So anyway, um, yeah, I've had, I've had leaks on a couple of, yeah. So these are, just like I said, these are the things that I'm looking at coming to you next year or this coming budget year. And, and here's some lottery projects over the last two or three years. Either lottery or public school building repair and relief fund, which is a separate lottery fund that the state developed over the last couple of years to give some counties like us a little relief on renovating older schools, which. like us a little relief on renovating older schools, which we have a lot of, so.
Uh, Matt, if you could, or.
Yes.
We used to scroll back on Jarvisburg, just, so that's 2023, 2024, has that already been done?
That chiller was contracted in the end of '23. It was just installed three weeks ago. That's one of the ones that I had a 60-week lead time on. And then it was, okay, we have the the chillers here, you have to pay for it to sit in the yard, uh, for the contractor's storage yard, but we had to find the time when the school was not in session or it was cooler so we could do it. So we just did that in the spring before it warmed up.
Yeah, so I was, I was going to do that. I thought like maybe it was still like a piano. It was gonna be like, that was 18 months and it's already out.
No, 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 that's what it was done. That's what it was done. And and Shawboro was just done about two weeks ago as well. And they're they're sister schools, so they're alike. But if you look at Shawboro on on another slide, just a few months later, it costs more. So that's where we are on, this is special capital funding and lottery projects. I didn't even include the the yearly capital projects that we send your way. And I I'd like to take an opportunity to thank you folks for helping us with these things on our older schools because as it was with the million that the way our capital funding works is I get a million for maintenance projects and then technology gets to 400,000, now 535, that million dollars was getting nowhere. So I appreciate you folks giving us the opportunity to do the long range facility study and helping us fund some of these things because it's a, it's a huge undertaking for me, but I'm glad that it's, it's nice to see things getting done and the schools getting better and improved. So thank you.
What was, we booked up for three years? It's like five, five, but then we we associated it all out for those.
It was, yeah, the initial, the initial ask was somewhere between three, three and 3.5 million and in fluctuation, depending on what you folks can allocate.
Right.
But whatever you give is appreciated.
Right.
Yeah.
So at the end of this five-year period, we will hopefully call up what I would call deferred maintenance.
Yes.
As the word stuff that got ahead of us.
Yes.
And then hopefully we'll get on a better, of course, things break down and happen all the time, but we'll be on a more even keel going forward.
I I'm planning, I'm hoping and planning that all all roofs will be done. Uh, all the chillers that need to be done will be done, but I can handle one chiller and a million dollar capital improvement, one year. Um, the other parts of that, again, with HVAC, there's, there's moving parts everywhere. With the chiller, there's VAVs, there's pumps, there's, those things I'm trying to address as well, like Kurt's Up Middle and the high school, they have VAV systems, which I'm trying to replace. Uh, control systems get antique, antiquated, get old and outdated and 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 I've found that some of the parts are obsolete now for some of my control systems. So you'll see coming across your desk, control systems being replaced and upgraded to.
But there's a proprietary.
Yes.
So you have to go back to them.
Yes, but I'm trying to get to, I'm actually now, when I change a control system, going with, you've probably heard of Tridium.
Yes.
Niagara.
Yes.
They are not proprietary, so I, so you can't.
Compatibility.
Back end compatibility. So with Shawboro and Jarvisburg, I'm slowly upgrading them. They are medicine systems, but I can integrate the medicine into the Niagara system.
Yeah, that that's a small move.
Yeah, trying to, trying to get away from proprietary and save a little bit of money. Shawboro and Jarvisburg were, like I said, two of the newest schools we had. Their control system didn't have graphics for my technician's troubleshoot, but it was basically lists and data fields and things where I'm putting graphics in now so you can look at a graphic of the school and see if it's cold or hot or a valve's not working or a motor's not running.
Where the the track for the high school, didn't you have the track last year?
Track was gone five years ago.
Is that that long?
Yeah, but if you don't maintain a rubberized track, it falls apart. But the track that we had was 10 years old and it was, and disrepair it could not be repaired. So we've replaced it. So I'm going to try to keep us on a five-year schedule to maintain that track. And like what they do is they put another layer of rubber, they put a clear coat after they paint. So every five to six years, if you keep it updated, it's not unsafe for the students to run on or do whatever they need to do.
Chunks out of it.
Yeah, the last one had chunks out of it. So the first, just so you know, the first bid that I received to renovate the track for its five-year service plan was 175,000, which was more than I paid to put the track in. So I found a guy down in Manio who started doing this two or three years ago. He did the track in Dare. They were happy and it ended up being less than half the price. All right, any other questions? All right, you, let's go to item number three.
Was that all the groundbreakers? What is the, what is the oldest school? Is it Mayark Elementary or Not Island? Not Island was.
Not Island.
Not Island was 1920.
This particular, this is it. This is the whole presentation. Um,
I like it. Thank you.
This list are capacity numbers in our building along with our current enrollment. Those capacity numbers I do want to, is as you're looking at this, Kurt Tech Middle, the high school, Griggs and Jarvisburg for sure, and Not Island all need to be reevaluated. And the reason I say that is that when we were going, the last time these numbers were tweaked, the last time they were changed, it was when the K3 class size mandate came through and with the heavy growth in the northern direction right now, at the northern end, um, that was, I know that those numbers were accurate in terms of capacity. Capacity in the, in an elementary school, that building is full when we hit capacity. We had trailers, the kids are tripping over each other, that's it for the space. Middle schools and high schools capacity numbers are relevant, as Ms. Parker said earlier. In other words, there is space to put kids, you have more time when you get to middle schools and high schools to have a long-range plan. But when an elementary is full, it is full. They, does that make, they're, they're, they're two different looks. So high school kid, middle and high school kids leave classrooms and a teacher has a blank room for a period of time filled with kids. Elementary, the room is unfilled for 40 minutes and the elementary teacher gets a moment of peace and planning for the rest of their day. That's how that 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 plays out. Um, the expansion at Mayark Middle School and Mayark Elementary School bought the county a lot of seats and and what those numbers came in at. It also put some time down. We also did a redistricting that's going to take place in this upcoming school year. It's how many, are they 40 kids? How many students will we go to? 44 kids from, uh, Mayark Middle to Kurt Tech Middle to increase the numbers at Kurt Tech Middle and decrease the numbers at Mayark Middle. So we have time in our middle schools, um, to can, to plan for the continued growth in the county. The, those notices went out, but that 540 number at Kurt Tech Middle was really more like 500, not 540. Because what capacity numbers don't take account for are the collapse of services that we have to provide for special ed, ESL, physical therapy, and so on. It does not take into account. So when you have a high needs classroom, I'm trying to use the verb words, words that we can all, if you have a child that needs, there are kids that we serve that need two adults in a room for one kid. Those are rare, but they're there. We have classrooms in our county, uh, at at the elementary level where we have four adults and eight children. And that's taken up an entire room. We have a what's called day treatment for kids that are having some mental health issues or other issues at at Kurt Tech Middle. It's a day treatment program. They need the whole classroom. Because the alternative, if we don't serve our kids inside our path, inside our walls, we have to send them off and Susan touched on this earlier. We may be sending them to across the border into Virginia to get services that are going to cost us six figures between transportation and their education. So we do everything we can to take care of our kids within our county, but there is a cost and expense that comes with that. And there's also a capacity, the capacity number is, it always has to be examined and questioned. The elementary is a little easier to whittle down because it's very finite, specific services.
Are those two federal mandates or state mandates?
So.
Do you still have the school, the special school going at Griggs?
So we do not. Uh, we did not get the partnership from the other schools in the area to put money forth into making that work. Unfortunately, we had to shut it back at Christmas.
Well, y'all had what, 10?
We needed, we had 10 seats and and three of the seats were ours. Other schools, it, it was $50,000 a seat to give you an idea of what it costs to serve our highest needs kids.
And the other counties just did?
The other counties goes not, I don't know, I don't want to speak, the other counties would not have jumped on board despite having kids that were needed. It was ironic, some of the kids that they wanted, you, the only kids that they wanted to send were kids that left our district and re-enrolled in another one. They were like, we'll pay the 50 to send it back to you. I think that might have had something to do with their parents understanding the services they were getting and what they could expect. That's.
But that, but we, we didn't get that. It was.
We did not get that by across the board.
Now, we're having to send those children elsewhere? Are we still able to?
We are, we are working through, Jamie Miller does an outstanding job, our E C department, to make sure our kids' needs are getting served. If we do have to have a child receive their education, um, outside of our county, we do pay the money to get that done. It is not, we're not going to send a kid home and say, good luck. We're going to do what we're supposed to do and get the services they need, get them returned to our school. And we also aren't going to, it's been successful. Um, we have, we've come light years in the, in our special educational world in the Kurt Tech County over the last five years.
So what's the plan for Griggs? We've got open classrooms and what's the plan to utilize that space?
So we have, currently have seven open classrooms in Griggs, seven full classrooms. So that space right now is is there. We would like to return to that group that we were working with. Um, there are new superintendents in the area and we hope that with some increase of funding and increased conversations that we can resurrect that program again. But you can see on the capacity numbers that Griggs has a larger capacity with seats available.
And when you redistrict, um, was there any thought to, um, drawing the line there south for Griggs to open up some space? I I see the numbers for Jarvisburg and they're not at capacity, but with the growth that seems to be within its chops in that area. My concern is that we will be at capacity at Jarvisburg and we'll have open classrooms at Griggs. So I didn't.
When that occurs, Zalina, and I'm looking for that, we'll re, I don't usually speak for the board, but I think I'm comfortable with this one, we would redraw the district lines. Um, that's probably the, one of the easier redistrict ones, because you can just slide that down. You can see if the developments are coming in and we can do headcount. Jarvisburg is completely under their predictive number for where they were supposed to be. They're supposed to be up in the 290s, but I thought we'd be talking redistricting right now, but all the new developments and all of the different condos, I, they didn't come with kids. So they don't, they're, they're, they're not there. So that Jarvisburg is, is of all the things on this list, they're the biggest surprise and and lacking kids. Uh, we've actually been reducing numbers of teachers in that building because the number of, uh, kids go down, that vacancy moves to another building, but that's.
Just to add, and thank y'all for asking these questions, the capacity number, and when you're talking about special ed, also, we have to keep in mind that we don't control who moves in. So when special ed is a federally mandated program, we have a high need student move in, that's also going to change something. That might require an additional staff member. That might be a child with such high medical needs that it's going to require an additional space. So some of that comes into play too, where we try to, it actually affects transportation because we don't offer every program at every building because it's not cost effective.
The, uh, like at the different schools, uh, the pre-K, like you've got pre-K at some and you got, what is there, four elementary is that pre-K or three?
We now have it at four. Those buildings have to be, um, what's the word?
Certified.
Pre-approved, the, the building has to be licensed.
And how about the program where they were doing the, is that still in play, the one at Central where like if you had a kid, you wanted to pay, was it pre-K?
Yes.
Feed for service.
Feed for service, yes.
Is that the, and not, are they the only kids that go to that one or is that, I mean?
We opened it to, that was originally open for teachers, trying to be an incentive to get teachers to say, hey, we're going to offer affordable childcare, a pre-K at Central. We opened it to county workers as well, but that's the only program like that. Now, I've had lots of people ask me, would we do that at Tolls Creek? I I don't think we're there yet to have that discussion.
So pre-K is at Griggs, Central, Shawboro and Mayark.
And we, it used to only be, that's a great question. We used to have all our pre-K services in in two buildings, Central and Griggs and different monteries. We didn't, we didn't have room at Shawboro and we didn't, and Mayark, we couldn't certify. So all of our kids, pre-K kids, had to be transported from across the county. We are now assigning, most kids, not all, are in their home school. And so that transition for those kids, so if you're in Mayark now, we never had pre-K services at Mayark. Now they get to go from pre-K to kindergarten right in the same building. That, that's only with the new classrooms.
Oh, yes, a benefit for the kids systematically is.
Yes. And if, and if we're talking about special needs child that's qualifying for pre-K, an hour and a half bus drive, if you were on South Mills Road to get down the county wasn't really great for that kid. It's the same thing that we did with special ed, that Jamie Miller did a really good job. There used to just be at Jarvisburg and then we had to have a conversation that we have our most high need students on a bus for an hour and a half or an hour and 45 minutes. It's a recipe for that disaster when they come in the door. So part of that, that capacity number, Matt, thank you for saying that. The building capacity is different than what we can really put in a classroom because if it is a special ed room, maybe it's a max of five kids, maybe it's a max of 10, but the capacity might say 25. But I mean, you, you know, we have some higher need kids that have to have much smaller classrooms than that.
Anyone else? Before we move on to the next agenda item, I do, it was mentioned earlier and we discussed it in our, in our meeting that we had, there are some engineered wastewater systems out there now that I think at Shawboro, the high school or wherever, we're concerned about wastewater being an issue. I think that we need to have the study done or whatever to see if in fact there is not a system that could be put in to allow for that addition to be put on Shawboro if it's needed or at the high school if it's needed. Because we can build additions and operate the same schools, but every time we build a new school, it costs a lot of money.
That's right.
And it actually takes away from the monies that you have to be able to use for other things because we can only fund so much and then you have to figure out how to keep the schools open. So.
It's like those new mobile units at Mayark Elementary, they're nice.
Well, and it affects in terms of teachers, if we can't get teachers, it's not for us to maximize the classroom.
Yeah, so I would like.
You should be back in the day.
I would like for our top manager and the superintendent to start having conversations about some of these, uh, engineered systems at some of these schools in the event we have to start looking at capacities that we have alternatives to a whole brand new school every time. About capacity. So with that.
What's, uh, Mr. Chairman, one question.
Yes, sir.
What's the second system that costs at, uh, the new school, ballpark cost that they're going to have?
I don't see those budget numbers. I can get them, but those, those run through Michelle and I don't see the numbers. But it's a, it's a special engineered system called Easy Treat, which is not like anything we have in our district now. They have it down at Dare. The system at Shawboro is a specific system that's, it's one of a kind in this, in this area. Dare has some, but ours is.
Dare has some, but ours is a larger system, but I'm not sure what's also built there.
The Shawboro School was built on property that was not good soil.
Right.
And that's why you have all of this septic stuff.
I luckily found a better operator who takes care of it much better. I just learned more about it than to begin. There's a better, thank goodness.
We, we funded it.
We mentioned that high school, is that capacity in terms of septic?
I'm not sure what the septic system, we know, I haven't had to deal with expansion at the high school. I've never studied how much the system is built, but I can find that out through talking to Alvermore Regional Health. In my future, in this special capital funding, one of the last years in the special capital funding has a line item to repair or modify Currituck County High School system because I've been advised by my septic operator who I contract with that it's in need of some work. And the system at Currituck County Middle School is a system called a Siphon System that's never, not even built anymore, so I'm concerned about that as well. It flushes like a toilet from time to time. It, it'll fill up and then it flushes like a toilet. Nobody knows how it works.
Your bad.
It'll work, it'll work, and I'm not messing with it.
The ad figures, damage figures per student per day. And Berkowitz said, I don't care what you got, you're going to build it four times bigger than one in figure show. So the system was way over the side.
It's probably fine, it probably just needs some patience.
He said, I don't care who the more.
He did say that.
Yeah.
I remember that. All right, so agenda item four, education collaboration, College of the Almaral, Currituck County and Currituck County.
We're school teachers, it's what we do.
We have done work.
Yeah.
Well, good evening, boards. I know that I drew the longest straw of the evening. I'm Renee Dally, Assistant Superintendent for Currituck County Schools, and I get to end on a positive note, so I appreciate that I drew the longest straw. Because tonight I'm going to celebrate some of the work of two of my distinguished colleagues along with your Board of Commissioners who have had some unwavering support for College of the Almaral and our partnership with College of the Almaral. It wasn't all that long ago that Currituck County didn't even have a local community college in, within their district in their LEA. So if you've been around long enough, like I now consider myself, when we started, we didn't have a College of the Almaral within the walls of Currituck County. Instead, if we were trying to get access, we had to go to the Elizabeth City campus, the Dare Campus or the Eaton Chawan Campus. So in two thousand eight and nine, when we opened J P Knapp Early College, the very charter for that early college high school was to partner with U N C Greensboro's high school. Because you know cooperative innovative high schools have to be partnered with some higher ed institution in order for students to work towards earning an associate's degree. Back in the day, that happened to be U N C Greensboro's high school. Luckily, the year after that, we began talks with College of the Almaral over at the Elizabeth City Campus to think about how we can start that partnership a little more locally and tap into all that they had to offer. And then as luck would have it, we had the support of the Board of Commissioners with College of the Almaral to explore opening a Currituck campus, and it's been a game changer. Not just for high school students, but for the adult population here in our Currituck County as well. So tonight I get to tell a little bit about the great things that two of my colleagues are doing. So you see Mr. Grady Edwards, Principal of Currituck County High School over there and C T E Director, Ms. Jennifer Woods. I'm going to highlight some of the work they're doing specific to partnering with College of the Almaral, as well as some of the great things that Dr. Bagwell and his staff are doing. And I think we have a current trustee and a former trustee for College of the Almaral who happened to be part of the commissioners with us this evening, so I'm sure you can share some additional insights into the partnerships as well. Yes, you have the handouts. I did not do a presentation, Mr. Anger, I did not, so there's nothing up here to have to go PowerPoint through. But the first thing in your handouts you see is this C H S Student Pathways Document. And really, this is like a secondary program of study document that we have hopes of being out so that parents understand what options are out there for students when they get into high school. Ms. Jarvis knows that I, as a former high school principal and certainly a staunch advocate and really found that my passion lies in making sure students understand what happens after they graduate high school. When we developed our strategic plan as part of Currituck County Schools in two thousand twenty-one, you'll notice on that particular strategic plan that our focus was to enroll, enlist, or employ students when they leave Currituck County High School or J P Knapp Early College. And everything that we do really falls back on, we want students to be prepared to enroll, enlist, employ. Not every student's going off to a four-year university, nor should they waste parents' money trying to figure out what they want to do with their life at a four-year university. Not all students will choose to go into a two-year program. Some will go directly into the workforce and others will enlist in the military. So we wanted to make sure that we were talking to students about all their options because all are valid. All make a difference for students in what happens next in their life. And there's nobody better to partner with than College of the Almaral because they get that too. They understand that not every student's going to graduate with a degree or diploma, that some just want to come and get a credential. And that's good enough because I'm sure Mr. Payment's looking for somebody with those credentials to hire on the spot.
I hired three high school graduates at Currituck High School to work in A P C training.
Absolutely.
And then they enjoy it.
And they will make more money than I do standing here with a four-year plus two-year degree. So kudos to them for that. So Mr. Edwards and his staff at Currituck High School have worked hard to put on paper, to put something in place for his guidance department and for families to be able to reference as that tool to say, here's what we have to offer at Currituck County High Schools. And again, we want to make sure we're looking at every student, whether they want to enroll, enlist, or employ. The high school has something to offer for the student that wants to take the maximum course potential within the A P course catalog. It has something for the student that wants to try to take career and college promise classes or dual enrollment, as it's referred to, at College of the Almaral. It also has offerings for that kid that's like, I don't want to do anything at school, but hurry up and get out of here, but I really like to work on cars, so I want to go take auto classes. And so what they want to lay out for their families, for their staff, for their counselors really, what is it that Currituck County Schools has to offer? And you'll notice on those pages, if you flip through there, it lists the course options, it talks about College of the Almaral dual enrollment, it talks about A P capstone classes and how students can get to where they want to be based on their individual desires, at least for the moment, where they think they want to do, and it will likely change between now and then. So I just wanted to highlight some of the work that Mr. Edwards and his team has done to really outline for families. In, in all of our tenures there, I don't know about you, I don't know how many times you met with your high school counselor when you were in high school, probably only when you were in trouble. I mean, did you get bailed out of something perhaps? But this planning takes a concerted effort in meeting with families and students, and this document really helps to make it much more deliberate that we're having conversations with kids about what happens to them when they leave high school. And so I, I'm appreciative of that work. In conjunction with that, the next document you have in your packet is really just the C T E course pathways, Career Technical Education Pathways Document. It irons out all the pathways offered in person at Currituck County High School's campus or over at J P Knapp Early College. And this pathway document just walks a family as well as staff through how students become completers in C T E pathways. So the first page just really, the first and second page walks through the pathways. The first course, you see in that other column that's labeled concentrator, that word concentrator is really important. In our world of school finance, as you just heard, in career and technical education, we want students to be concentrators in a pathway if they're going through a C T E pathway. That means as much as we say that high school's all about exploring what you think you might want to do so we can help you narrow that down, we also really don't want to be hodgepodge about it. And I, Ms. Jarvis and I both have, I'm sure, lots of stories we can share about kids that willy-nilly just take courses because I think I want to do this, or maybe I didn't really know, and so somebody just marked me down for this course. We wanted to be more deliberate because that concentrator course matters. If I'm a student who wants to enter into the hospitality industry and I want to take Foods and Nutrition One and Foods and Nutrition Two, that level two course is being concentrator status, meaning I've completed a level one and a level two. Why that matters is Perkins funding, that federal funding we talked about. Really, our C T E programs are designed to complete students in a pathway and earn that concentrator status. And so we want to make sure as counselors are meeting with students, parents are sitting down the street scheduling courses, that we don't just pick Ag Mechanics One and the Ag pathway, come over here and take Foods One and the Food pathway, and then maybe I'll take an Animal Science Two just because. We want them to finish a pathway first and foremost so they earn that concentrator status. And then if they want to explore a different pathway, absolutely, that's what it's there for. So this document assists both our career development coordinator, Kelly Greenwell, and Ms. Woods and her staff with making sure students understand and our guidance department understands what it takes to be a concentrator in a C T E pathway. That second page on there speaks to C O A's education pathways. So again, we'll talk back in the day, when College and Career Promise first came out, where students could dual enroll in college and high school at the same time, it was really designed to give students the two-year undergrad basic requirements to transfer to a four-year university. So you can earn an Associate's in Arts or an Associate's in Science. When it first started, that was it. You had to pick one of those two. Because folks, why it's up to the fact that not everybody's going off to a four-year university, it's expanded. And so now, College and Career Promise also includes Career Technical Education Pathways, and that's huge because it's never a one-size-fits-all. And so on the back page of that document, you will see in there how students can go on from high school courses and into a C T E pathway through the C C P College Promise over at College of the Almaral and complete, again, either a degree, a diploma, or a certificate over at College of the Almaral in welding, H VAC, you name it, all the programs that they have to offer. The link is in there, I know in a P D S you can't click on it and click, but I'll be happy to share that out so you can explore those programs. Or I'm sure Ms. Jarvis or Mr. O'Neill can share with you as all their discussions that happened, because C O A really has some amazing career and technical education programs over at their campus.
It was nice, because last year when I taught at C O A, H VAC there, I actually had some Currituck students that went, were enrolled in the H VAC that I was teaching, and that was kind of interesting. It was a nice group that, because they were finishing up and they went there.
Absolutely. And then he hired.
Hey, I just want to touch on what I shared, and this is, of course, with conversations that both Chairman O'Neill and I had with Dr. Bagwell. One of the issues that we talked about is a realignment of some campuses. As most of you know, we have four main campuses. We have the main, the main campus, of course, is Elizabeth City, but we have campuses. In Edenton, we have one, a very nice facility down in Dare County, and of course, our very nice facility. And our facility enrollment in C O A is growing much faster than Elizabeth City and much faster than Edenton, and it's on par with how fast Dare County's campus is growing. So there's a discussion that we had about when, when the new building is built over there, the Allied Health Science Building, that's going to open up space and of course, some programs will be possibly moved. And he has an interest in partnering as to what needs we could put here. If, for example, machining moves over to be more applicable over in Dare, I mean, in Pasquotank County with the welding program, that would open up opportunities here. And so a discussion as to what, what needs, what programs are growing here, that that space could fill is, is very important. And I think that is exciting because so many of our students are taking advantage of C O A and it's, it's, of course, keeping our kids here in, in good jobs and good pathways to make a good living. So I think some of the things that I gave you was the Propel NC initiative, which is being supported by the State Board of College Trustees as well as fifty-eight college, community college presidents. And it has gained a lot of traction in the General Assembly this year, and it's going to, it's going to redo the funding formula as to how programs are funded. It's going to focus on what needs and what degrees and what job skills are needed in an area, and that's, of course, going to be what pours money into that school. We have, last year, we had the number one nursing program, not just in the state, but one of the most outstanding nursing programs in the southeast, and that's a great example of, you know, what we can offer. And so this Propel NC, I just wanted to give you a little information from Dr. Bagwell about what that is and how it would work and how it can benefit our students. The other one, and I know everybody on the board, proper, the Board of Education has seen this, this is the My Future NC 2025 Profile. And one of the things that I'm really proud of that our schools and all of our support staff have done is increase the number of opportunities. One of the, if the, the county data book that Dana mentioned and referenced, one of the pages in there is youth opportunity, and that percentage is the number of sixteen through, I think, twenty-two-year-olds, twenty-four-year-olds that are not enrolled in school nor have a job. And that number for us actually went down greatly. We are now in the top ten of, of how many opportunities our kids do have, and I think that's, you can see that down in the lower left corner of the side of the map, nine point eight percent, sixteen through twenty-four. And you can see where we fall in the state, we are actually below the state average, so that's a good thing.
And we appreciate Dr. Bagwell, when he has meetings with us, we meet twice a year for all high school partners to come together and meet with Dr. Bagwell and his staff. And then honestly, if we pick up a phone, they're like, hey, let's meet, like, tell me where we can go and let, we'll be happy to meet with you. And as part of that, they always ask us, like, again, hey, what do you think we need? And we have those conversations. We were somewhat stunned that H VAC's located in Edenton originally, kind of thinking, man, we've got the resort area here, we're on the coast. Our kids would completely benefit from having an H VAC program here, and they are so innovative and thinking outside the box. They were like, let's figure out how we can put it on wheels. Maybe we can do these modular type things where we can bring. And we, we love folks that think outside the box. I like people who think about how to get around the red tape, not put up the red tape. And I think that Dr. Bagwell and his staff over at College of the Almaral, even his professor before him, were absolutely coming to the table with solutions versus obstacles for us to come and find. And I think you're right, if you look on the two handouts I gave you about unuplicated enrollment, I think it's interesting to note that out of the seven LEAs that C O A serves, four of those LEAs outnumber enrollment at C O A through their dual enrollment students than their adult high school, I mean, their adult population. So C O A's enrollment is absolutely supported by the high school partners that it serves. And so again, in four of the seven LEAs, the high school students outnumber the adult students enrolled at College of the Almaral, and we're one of those. And we're one of those.
And that number's growing.
Absolutely.
And I think the more students we can serve, you know, I know the foods program, the culinary arts is over at Edington. I would love to see that program expanded here because obviously, once again, the opportunities in the region. And I think our campus is perfectly situated to draw not only, of course, our own students but Camden, Pasquotank, and Dare. It's not a stretch for any of those. And so as we look at programs that drive at the high school, hopefully we can transition and make that a credentialing or a degree program here too.
Absolutely. Sounds like we're having the same conversations with Dr. Bagwell and his staff behind the scenes because we say kind of the same things. Those programs that we think... And again, community colleges were designed to serve the regions in which, you know, they were surrounded, right? And our needs do look different than Edington Chauan's. Our job market looks different than what it does in Edington Chauan. So programs should be aligned and making sure those offerings are housed in the LEAs closest to where that labor market really is. So again, just wanted to share that. You also have in there about our high school credentialing. So credentials are important. I don't know if you know that students can walk out of high school with a CNA and go directly to work at Centerra or any of these other programs. Students can walk out of high school with a SERCS Safe certification, go to Dunk Donuts, and not have to do that once Dunk Donuts employs them. And so we talk a lot about credentials, and there's a little handout that you have in your packet as well that speaks to, we've increased credentialing in just the span of the 23, 22, 23 school year, 23, 24, up 749 credentials. We were able to certify 1,371 students with credentials while in high school over a multitude of different types of credentials, from SERCS Safe to fire and EMT credentialing, you name it, you know, we offer that. The state of North Carolina, in fact, has found so much emphasis in it that the Career Technical Education Department's lobbying for it, and the state of North Carolina now pays for any high school student to take those credentials. So if I want to get an ASC certification, the state of North Carolina will pay for it in automating. If I want to get a fire EMT certification, the state of North Carolina will pay for it when I'm in high school.
So if someone wants to get their CFC certification, the state will pay for that in high school?
Whatever the credentials are that are supported by the state curriculum, and there's a list of them, and I'm happy to, like, share with you so that you can see, I have the last few years' worth of data that the number of students who've received certifications and then how many have earned it out of our high school curriculum.
Renee, the tuition for our dual-enrolled students.
Yep.
Is that waived?
It is. So on the backside of the enrollment sheet, if you didn't take a picture real quick of the amount of cost savings, what it means for a student and families, that number absolutely also happens to be on there. So tuition is waived for College and Career Promise students with COA.
Books?
Textbooks, we incur the cost as a district. We have made the agreement, and LEAs do it differently in every types of different parts of the state, we pay for the textbooks for students. There are sometimes nominal fees where they have to buy certain gear that they pay for, and it's nominal. And again, we have benevolent funds that we assist students who need support for that. So Ms. Jarvis, I'll wrap up with ways that we continue to partner with COA. She said way, and I did not talk to Selena before this, but I'm going to use that opportunity to segue, the sheet that you had about our students in between the ages of 16 and 21. One of the things that we continue to have conversations with COA about is our most at-risk populations. We have AP programs, we have dual enrollment programs to service those students who really have that as their trajectory in life. We continue to fall short, and that's the scarlet letter we will always bear, and I will preach it because I've lived it as a high school principal. Those kids who don't find value in an education, those kids I couldn't convince to stay and finish a high school diploma, were the toughest ones for me to swallow. Because I want them to still be able to go out and get a decent job, not just work at McDonald's or Sonic because that's all they have available to them because they have no high school degree. And so we've started some discussions with COA about our alternative learning program and potential for how we can morph our alternative learning program to tie directly in with trades program over here. Because as crazy as it sounds, I can't convince a kid about why they need British Lit, but I can convince a kid to take the machining class over here at COA because it matters to them. If I can figure out how to bridge those with their assistance and figuring out how we can create an alternative program that somehow blends an opportunity for students, that 16- to 28-year-old demographic who is our dropout population in North Carolina, a kid can quit school at 16, in case you didn't know that, which is crazy to me. But if we can figure out how to really grasp those kids and, you know, it'd be over here where they're not part of the high school. They hate, these are the kids that hated going to school. They don't care about prom. They don't care about all the things I kept trying to throw at them to get them to stick around. But walking on here and walking into that machining class, they'll show up. So we're currently working with them to talk about how we could maybe revamp and reimagine alternative programming.
I think a lot of that centers around what's required for our adult population at COA, Math 3, Math 4, you know, the elephants in the room that people don't really talk about, especially with our boys that hate school. I mean, there are girls that hate school too, but there are boys that, a lot of boys that I've found that really hate school. But if that conversation can move and we can get those kids credentials, degrees, when they can't even see the way out of a high school diploma, I think that is a great conversation. And I'm excited that we can marriage, make a good marriage between those programs.
Just to make sure, I want to make, and first of all, thank you, Ray, the others. You have hit the ground running at Currituck High School and the fact, Paul and I were talking, the fact that a parent can come in and have this packet, it helps a lot. It helps with the narrative that there's not technical education because there is. Kids can do whatever they want. I do just want to briefly talk about, the state has changed the graduation requirements. Well, not changed, they've changed ours. The state has always required 22. We, and I don't know when that started, waiting for any of us that are any kind of position on the board, as Currituck County, we always require 28. The state has said no more. You're not going to require more than what we are saying you have to have. So now a student only has 22. Part of Mr. Edwards, and he can certainly speak to this, part of creating this packet, we're on block schedule. We can do the math. Eight times four, you're getting 32 credits. Eight times three, it's really a junior that can graduate. And what Mr. Edwards started talking about is the last thing he wanted was a 16-year-old to walk out the door with a diploma but no skills. That's not going to help anybody. It's certainly not going to help our community. So when the state said the 22, and there still is the English and the Math, I do want to be clear, students do not have to take Math 3 and 4. That can be changed with CTE pathway. The problem with the diploma is we take a ding. We take a ding on our graduation rate. It's a very weird formula. No student has to take Math 3 and 4 to get a high school diploma. Again, I think we have narratives in the community and they kind of run. The downside of the school system is we take a ding. That's where we need the state to fix that. We already, the principal already has the power to say, Math 1, Math 2, and a CTE pathway. But they're dinging us on the backend on a rate, which is what, that's where, that's where it needs to be because the kid that's in the Math 1 and 2 and goes in the pathway, Mr. Edwards already has the power to say, that's fine. But then we're taking a kid on the backend. So to me, I think that's an easier fix that we could talk to Mr. Hennig or Mr. Goodwin about. We don't need you to change everything. We just need you to stop dinging us on the backend when you've already said this is okay to do.
I think Senator Hennig is on board with that, discusses that, whether he agrees with that. I think he's got some people in Raleigh that support that well, some other individuals.
I probably have those conversations now.
Yes.
Yeah, it's not a revamp. We've corrected on our end date when they said stop requiring 28. So we're going to correct that on our end, the 22. It is producing a problem people don't think about, that now we're going to have 16-year-olds to finish, to which is this work that Mr. Edwards has done is powerful because then we can have conversations with parents. I mean, I have my own son. He's going into high school. He could finish at the end of the sophomore year. The last thing Currituck County needs is Ryan Parker to be running around, that is, a 16-year-old finishing his sophomore year with a high school diploma. I need there to be a route which, and then to Renee's point, stay in school, let the state pay for your Associate's degree. And that's just that narrative. Mr. Edwards, do you want to speak at all to what you created since you did all this work?
You've hit a lot of major points. I think the silver lining is with the 22 credits is I think it gives us a ton of flexibility that we may not have had before in some ways. And I can't say anymore than what you've already said, what Ms. Dobbins already said. I will share a personal story. I had a kid who was definitely going to drop out, 16 or 17-year-old, definitely going to drop out. We started having these conversations and saying, hey, bud, if you can finish Math 3 for me, I can put you on a path next year with the 22 credits instead of dropping out. You can take welding over here half the day. He was totally on board, totally all for it. So having those conversations, I think is going to be really critical going forward that the 22 credits, that's not a stopping point. In fact, I'm pretty sure most colleges, they want you to have at least 24, right? So again, I think now, now that we have this information, now that we have this plan, the next step is to getting it in the hands of our families, getting it in the hands of our students, our families, and then realizing, we have a gem in Currituck County High School where there are a plethora of options for you, whatever pathway you choose in life, Currituck County High School can set you up for success if you use it the way it should be in college. So that's the work I've been trying to do. That's the messaging that I'll be having over the next course. Honestly, we just finished up course registration. My guidance team and myself, we've been having conversations with students, really, and families, really encouraging them to consider COA, consider internships. What's the next step once you finish your four classes? Let's get something in place while you're here because let's not be in a rush to get out of here when this program's set in 16. Happy to answer any questions y'all have, you know, during this conference later. Call me, email me, love that conversation.
I think what you said is very important because you got to hook in on the wagon to not just leave school. You got to hook in and say, okay, I've got to do a little bit, but I'm going to get something out of it.
I've used this phrase a lot to the, I said, kids, son, man, start thinking with the end in mind, right? Get through Math 2, 3, get through the course, right? And I can help you out, right? We got some interesting work with our, we have a, we call it Phoenix Academy, rise from the ashes, kids that don't do well in traditional setting, we're putting them on a, hey, here's a virtual option for some of your core classes. Get through it, let's get through this as quick as possible. And then with the end in mind, here's what you can get out of it. He's a perfect example. He's fired up to go and he's interested in law, he wants to do well as a profession. I said, man, you can do this right here in high school, just stay with me. Don't be in a rush to get out of here and go work for Harvard.
And I thought something else that was kind of nice I experienced is a couple juniors internship with me over the summer, and, you know, a chance to work in the field of HVAC over the summer, the junior summer. So they went back for the senior year and finished it out. So when they graduated, they already had a feel for it, liked it. It gave an opportunity to make sure that any path they wanted to continue down. So their senior year, they could either make a decision to, hey, I didn't like this industry, or I did like it. They chose they liked it. When they graduated, they ended up working for me, and they only had a summer of the development for me. So it gives them an opportunity internship to make sure that they see it, they read it, they hear about it, but the experience of the internship makes them really understand that this is, you do really like this welding, whatever it might be. So I think the internship's when you can get a lot as far, but that was...
What are internships, I know this is probably from Ms. Brown, are they pretty good in the county opportunity-wise for internships?
So we are, we are working on building that program. I think currently, this year, we'll have about 30 students turning at different fields from, we have students that are going into teaching cadet, they're in the classroom. We have some at nursing. We have some at, I think we have one at event service. So we're continuing to build that and grow that. And that's very personal for each of the kids, you know, trying to find what it is that they're passionate about, seeing if a student class fits, and then pushing them into that internship possibility. So it is very, you know, on the fly because everybody is a little bit different. I think just every year you're trying to find the different companies, you know, for the students to go and intern.
The Chamber's been a huge help because they work, they meet with the Chamber frequently. The Chamber is always reaching out to their businesses to see if they would be interested in hosting. It's always a little bit of those questions, do people want high school kids coming to intern? Because, you know, high school kids, do they show up on time, or they got to dress appropriately? They go be on their phones all day. But they really work hard with the Chamber to find businesses who are willing. And again, we're blessed. And I'll finish this so Paul can get out of here because I know he's checking his watch.
You're good.
Listen, the fact that we're all sitting here at the same table is important, right? And again, I'm born and raised here. Like, there's no place I would rather my kids come to school. We have our faults, we have our blemishes, our warts, whatever you want to call them. But it's a great place to raise a family, it's a great place to put your kids in school. I wouldn't choose to be anywhere else. This is where I want to finish my career. But it takes us all being at the same table and having these discussions, supporting the same thing. At the end of the day, we all want the same thing for our kids when they leave here. We want them to be able to enroll, to enlist, or to employ, and be good kids, right? At the end of the day, that's the most important. I want them to be good kids. And so I just appreciate, I think I speak on behalf of all of us at the school district, the fact that Mr. O'Neil and Ms. Parker said, hey, whatever's the past is the past. This is new boards, let's come back to the table. And this is what it will take to continue to make us be back in the top 10% of school districts or counties in the state of North Carolina. So from a local kid who went through this whole system to now serves in this whole system, I'm just, I'm appreciative that we're all here at the same table together today.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I got a formal adjournment. Are you going to adjourn?
No, I just want to say that I've had a lot of meetings over the years with school boards. Some have been good, some not so good, but this was very informative. And I'm very thankful for y'all putting together the information and sharing it with us. And I know you guys work really hard with what you're doing, and I'm so glad to hear some of the things that I've heard tonight. And our board is always, any board I've served on has always been committed to education at Currituck County, and this board will continue to be as well. And I just thank you all for putting this together for us. And I thank the commissioners for coming. I have to mention that we're lucky to have Ms. Jarvis as the vice chairman at COA, and she will be moving in as typically happens to the chairman, so at some point. So that'll be important to us as we move forward. And we've got a lot of different skill sets here, and let's put them together to make Currituck all that it can be and should be. And let's just say thank you to the school board and everyone that came down, and the staff, I can't forget the staff. They do all the work and we take the credit. Or we give them the blame, whichever way it goes. We just thank you all for coming.
Yeah, and I think we talked about as chairs and vice chairs, we're going to try to meet quarterly. And then as two boards, we're going to try to meet twice a year. Because really, at the end of the day, it's just communication, just being open and honest about what we need and y'all being open and honest about the restrictions that you also had. And then just as Paul and I were sitting here and we're talking about the tier status, and I'm saying, we're approaching near 50% of children living at the poverty line. Those are the kind of things that y'all can talk about. And when we're talking about making changes, this is great. I'm sure the people watching, my Patreon, I hope you weren't disappointed. There was nothing really to be talked about about. It was just good, it was just good government work. Exactly how it should be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a motion to adjourn the board of commissioners.
So moved.
I have a motion. Second, all in favor, aye. All opposed can stay.
A motion to adjourn the Board of Education.
Second. Second, all in favor. Good night.